There are still some people out there signing in, but we're going to go ahead and get started anyway. Well, welcome to the second night of our town meeting. Tonight, we're going to be interviewing candidates for the elementary school district. And then Jill is going to tell us a little bit about what's going on with the high school district, and then for candidates for the park district. So everybody should have a ballot in your hands. If you don't have a ballot, you should go out to the front desk and sign in and get a ballot. The first thing on my list is I want to thank all of the people who are on our administrative committee for the town meeting. We have a group of 12 people who have been putting a lot of work in and have been very successful at what they've accomplished. And they are Margaret Abel, David Anderson, Ralph Bishop, Paul Blahunka, Robin Huzig, John Josephitis, Tim Pennage, Steve Potzer, Jill Rosa, Carol Russ, Jan Snowbridge, Valerie Steiner, and myself, Neil DeOma. So please give it up. The first thing on the agenda is to see if there are any nominations from the floor for the elementary school district. So does anybody have any additional nominations for the school district? If not, we'll close nominations for the school district. What about the park district? Are there any nominations from the floor for the park district? If not, we'll close those nominations. Before we get going, if you look on the back of your agenda, you'll notice that there's a list of what it costs for us to put on a town meeting. It's just under $1,600 a year, and we have no sources of funding other than ourselves donating toward the cause. So tonight, between, once we've listened to the elementary school district candidates, while we're switching chairs before the park district candidates come out, we're going to be passing the hat and asking for donations. And I would guess that there's probably close to 100 people in this room. And if it costs us $1,600, if everybody donated just $5, that would get us $500 toward us. So please be generous and help us out. So with that, I'd like to introduce Carol Russ. And Carol will proceed with the inviting the candidates up here.
Yes, hello, and thank you for being here. We have some wonderful candidates to present. Love to have the elementary board candidates come up now and get seated so we can get started. And also want to thank you for being here. We were pleased with the turnout last night, and it's just great to see so many faces here tonight, too. We'll have three different segments that you see on your agenda, and we'll begin with elementary board. We have some of your questions ready already. And I'd like to talk to you about the cards that I hope you got and didn't take, or if you raise your hand and you want a card to ask a question, Robin Huzig and Jill Rosa would be happy to give you a card. They'd be happy to take your cards. And we'll try and include as many as we can. It's really a challenge for so many candidates and just a short amount of time. We're trying to do a 90-minute meeting tonight, so thank you for coming. And Paul is chatting with the candidates. We do not have a contested group here. Oh, boy, we have a lot of questions for a brief amount of time. Paul was chatting with the candidates about the timing. We will have two-minute statements and one-minute questions. We'll go full round. And Walt was chatting to everyone about the microphones, and I do want to say that for the other candidates who've come up, these are very directional microphones. They need to point at you, and they need to be close to your mouth to pick up the sound. We learned last night that a lot of reverberation happens when we put the volume up. So Walt will be working on the volume, but we also need help from you, too. So make sure that mic is pointing at you. That's the number-one important thing. All right, then. So we are going to start with the District 65 Elementary Board candidates, and the way we're going to do this is we're going to start first with a two-minute personal statement that they each prepared before we go to questions. So we will start with Mark Berry.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming, and I wanted to say thank you to the Lake Bluff Caucus for hosting us and putting this on. It's a lot of work, and I appreciate it. Most importantly, I'm very grateful for the opportunity to sit before you. It's been an honor to serve in the past, and I hope to continue in the future. So I've been on the school board since 2011. I've been the board president since 2013. I've been lucky enough to be surrounded by six other really dedicated board members, and together we've accomplished a great deal. During my time on the board, we've abated taxes, we've refinanced all of our bond debt in the city of the community in millions of dollars, we've remodeled the middle school and came in under budget, we've balanced budgets every year despite some unexpected expensive disasters like the AC last year in this building and the chiller, if anybody remembers that, at the middle school back in 2012. We've developed two strategic plans and completed one. We've developed and implemented a facilities maintenance plan. And now, one of my things I'm most proud of, our school, according to the new Illinois School Rating System, all of our schools are designated as exemplary by the state of Illinois. And that designation is only given to 10% or less of all schools in Illinois. I'll also point out that our neighbors to the south are not 100% exemplary schools, not that we're ratting them. So I'm asking for your support to come in an upcoming election to help me continue this work. We've got some really big issues to deal with in the next few years, and I believe my experience can help us navigate through that. Couple of examples: Our superintendent and our elementary school principal are both retiring in June of 2020. Big deal. We're facing a very complicated lawsuit that may take a while, if not years, to resolve. We're facing an increase in teacher administrative shortages throughout the state of Illinois, and we have the ongoing challenge of balancing the need for outstanding curriculum and fiscal prudence, and we take that very seriously. So as far as my qualifications go, I stand on my record. I've served for nearly eight years, six of which as board president. As I described above, I've had a successful run during this time, and I think that my board makes a balance that I'm a collaborator, a facilitator, a team builder. I've established strong relationships with the village, the park district, and Lake Forest Schools, and I strongly believe that all taxing authorities need to work together to consider the collective tax burden that takes place on all residents. And I'm now, I used to represent, I used to have kids in the district. My kids are out of school in college, and now I am a non-user. I don't really like that term, but so I get, I see it from both ends now, and I feel like I can represent all taxpayers in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to go in alphabetical order, so our next speaker will be Andy Duran, and pull your microphone close and take it away.
Good evening, and I echo Mark's sentiments. Thank you for having me here tonight. It's an honor to be in front of you. I'm Andy Duran. I've lived in Lake Bluff for the past eight years. The biggest and best job I have is that of a husband to Lisa and a father to Immigration Izzy, a third grader and first grader at LBEES, respectively. Second to that, I've spent the last six and a half years as the executive director of LEAD, a local nonprofit that has had success in reducing underage drinking and substance use in our community and is growing rapidly, now offering programs and services all over the United States. Some of you may also know me as the founder of Camp Hope, a locally-based nonprofit that offers a recreational residential summer camp for children and teens with disabilities, or through my early work in my career as a youth minister at the Church of St. Mary in Lake Forest, where I brought the popular chiro program for youth back in 2002. I've had significant leadership roles in this community for quite some time now, and I'm ready to take this next step by running for the Board of Education. My family is very active in this Lake Bluff community. My wife, a former teacher, volunteers for everything imaginable at school and through the PTO. Through my role at LEAD, I've developed relationships with nearly every community sector and stakeholder, including the entire school administration, many of the current board members, as well as teachers, parents, and students. I'm routinely in our schools here in Lake Bluff, and I definitely have a pulse on what issues are important with each of our groups. My job at LEAD takes me into more than 100 schools a year all over the country. Having this perspective helps me to better understand the environment of a specific building, school, or community. That knowledge is actually the primary reason that we decided to settle our house, or buy a house and settle our family here in Lake Bluff. Our schools here are just different than the rest. They feel different, the students are different, the faculty and administration are different, our community is just different. I believe in our schools, and I'm running for school board so I can do my part to help them to continue being a high-value community asset well into the future. Here's what you get from me: I'm a quick learner, an independent thinker, and a solutions-oriented leader. I'm a good listener. My job as a board member will be to learn as much as I can, to listen to you, and to fully understand the beliefs and desires of our constituency, then act in accordance with those findings. This next board has an incredible responsibility: to hire new administrative leadership, to bring about resolutions to the lawsuit naming Lake Bluff schools in a way that's fair to all, but doesn't compromise the long-term growth of our school, and to ensure long-term financial health and stability. All of the above can be accomplished together with your help. I ask for your support, and I know that we're all up to the task. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker will be Ann Hill.
Good evening. I'm Ann Hill. I'm excited to be here in front of you and running for school board. So I am not originally from Illinois, Michigan originally. Made my way to Chicago after college, met my husband here. We moved out to Denver for eight years, and when we got back, decided to settle in Lake Bluff. So we've been here since 2013. I've got three kids at LBEES, a kindergartner, a third grader, and a fifth grader. So I am very invested in the schools. I want them to continue to be exemplary, and I want them to do a really good job, educate my three kids for schooling later on, and ultimately in life. I spend a lot of time in the schools. I do a lot for the schools. I've been on the PTO board for the last five years. I'm currently the president of the PTO. I'm in my second year at that, and that term will end in May. Why do I want to do this? I want to do this because Lake Bluff is a community that runs on volunteers, and I think that's a really unique, wonderful thing that our village is. And I think if we all continue to do our part and volunteer, that Lake Bluff will continue to be an exemplary community with exemplary schools. This is something that I'm interested in, that I'm passionate about, and I feel that I'm qualified to do. So school board is what I chose to run for, to do my part. Let's see, other qualifications. I hold a JD degree, so I went to law school. I worked in the Denver Juvenile Court for two years before leaving the practice of law, so now it feels like, hey, maybe that JD is going to be good for something. The last thing I'll say is that I know that only roughly 20% or so of the households in Lake Bluff actually have kids in the District 65 schools. So one of the things that's important for us on the school board, should we be elected, is to keep all residents in mind. So yes, we want to make these decisions that are the best for our schools and keep our schools. Wonderful, but we have to take into consideration that there are many, many other families and residents of Lake Bluff that do not use the schools. So I think that that's something important to balance in our decision-making. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. So now we're going to take some audience questions, and I have so many here. I do like to read questions the way people want them asked, because sometimes they have an emphasis, but we have so many, I'm going to try and combine two. The first speaker on this will be Andy Duran, so this one is for you first, and then the others can speak. The first of these two questions is, "This board will be selecting a new superintendent. What experience do you have in this process, and how do you plan to involve the community?" And another questioner asks, "What role do you see the current superintendent playing in the search for her replacement? Do you support an ad hoc community group playing a role in the search?"
Sure. Great question. Thank you. So many of you, some of you may know, I was actually on the search committee that hired Dr. Sophie back in 2012 or 2013, or whenever that was, not fresh into my job at LEAD. So I went actually through that process with this district. I love the selection that was made by the search committee. I was involved as a community member, not having any involvement in school, not even having a kid in the school at the time. So I'm a huge fan, a proponent of engaging the entire community in the process and engaging all stakeholders and letting the community have a voice in that. The experience I have would be, I know lots of superintendents. I know almost every superintendent in the middle school and high school districts on the North Shore, and certainly in most through Lake County. And having been involved in that interview process with Dr. Sophie, I feel pretty confident in my ability to at least provide some good insight in that process.
Thank you. And next speaker, excuse me, will be Ann Hill. Thank you.
Do you want me to add?
Yeah, same question.
So I agree with everything that Andy said. I will add that in considering Dr. Sophie being a part of the process, I think it would be important to have her be a part of the process. She knows the job better than anyone else, and so then can make an educated and informed decision or recommendation, I should say, not decision.
Okay, great. Mark Berry, did you want to comment on the superintendent search?
Sure. I was involved, I was on the board that hired Dr. Sophie, and have worked with her very closely over the past six years. And so I feel very familiar with the process. I can tell you that we will be interviewing search firms. We're hiring a search firm to identify that next candidate. We begin interviewing search firms in January, and once we identify a search firm, they will begin a process which routinely includes focus groups in the community, surveys for community members to fill out so that we can create a profile of what communities looking for in a superintendent. We will then have that search firm bring in a handful of, they will prescreen and then bring in a handful of candidates. And it was yet to be determined as whether or not, how many community members will be involved directly in interviewing, or whether they will or not. That is not been determined. As far as Dr. Sophie playing a role in the process, I fully expect her to put her two sets in because she's a valuable contributor to everything we do.
Okay, thank you very much. The next question will go first to Ann Hill, so grab your microphone. And we have a very well-educated audience here. I have some questions that are related. They're both fiscal in nature, so again, I'm sorry to ask a long question, but it's what our audience wants to ask, and that's what our question coordinators do, they bring us the issues that you're interested in. We want to make sure we cover those. We want to also make sure we have a little diversity in the questions. So, "The fiscal crisis in Illinois is well-known. What are your thoughts on consolidation of school districts in Illinois to save money? Do you think consolidation will eventually become a factor for North Shore schools?" So that's one approach to fiscal issues. Another question, same subject, is, "With so much uncertainty around future funding of District 65, for instance, the state tax freeze, pension shifts, teacher contracts, special programs, et cetera, what is your plan to ensure the quality education Lake Bluff students currently receive remains sustainable?"
Hmm, good questions. So first, on the consolidation of schools, I know that it's an issue. I know that it has come up multiple times, and that superintendents have met on this and talked about this. I personally would love for Lake Bluff to stay as its own district. I think we have exemplary schools, as we've been saying, and I think that that's something really unique and wonderful about Lake Bluff is this small village and our wonderful schools and the fact that we, well, I just hope that we can keep them that way, and I would work to keep them that way.
Great, thank you very much. And same question, Mark Berry.
I agree with Ann about, a personal feeling about Lake Bluff schools. I think that everybody in this room knows that culturally, Lake Bluffers are a little different than Lake Foresters, who would make the most obvious candidates for consolidation. I think the consolidation idea comes up all the time. We just had a presentation about it in the board meeting, and there's some logistical challenges that not everybody's aware of. One of which is, you know, our tax rates are higher, theirs are lower. There's very little incentive for Lake Forest to want to consolidate with us. We would raise their taxes. We also would have to shift to their pay scales. They pay their teachers more than ours, so that would drive costs up. Also, Lake Forest District 67 is, their buildings and grounds are owned by the city of Lake Forest, so that's a level of tangle that that would be very challenging to separate and involve a lot of work. As far as sustainability in the future, it's putting your nose to the grindstone. We have excellent finance people now, excellent curriculum people now, and staying ahead of what's going on in the state. Our administrators are dialed in, have lots of connections in Springfield, and know what's coming. So we prepare our budgets for worst-case scenarios, and we have to continue doing that.
Okay, thank you. Andy, did you want to take the same question about fiscal issues?
Sure. To answer the question directly, I do think that consolidation is a reality in Illinois. However, I don't think that's necessarily right for Lake Bluff. I agree with Mark, and that we have a unique school, we have a unique district. I said that in open comments. And consolidating with other districts may not make sense for us, while it may be a reality for others. I think the job of this board and the job of all boards to succeed it will be to continue to bring that elite education as goal number one, that unique environment for students to learn and, you know, deal with things emotionally well. I think that's the number-one issue and the number-one responsibility, and I think that, as Mark said, you know, being fiscally conservative and responsible and doing that in the cheapest, you know, in the most responsible way possible is what's necessary. But I do think, I'm a huge proponent of having our schools remain the way that they are as well.
Super, thank you. All right, well, the first responder to our next question will be Mark Berry. And shifting gears a little bit here, I think our violent crime rate here is zero. Yay! But it's on people's minds. So two questions, and short ones, but two questions that are related. "How good is the trauma counseling in this district, and also what safety precautions are in place, and should they be updated?"
That was a great question. Great questions. Not ones that I'm completely versed in. Some of that falls more at an administrative level, but I could talk to you a little bit. A great example of trauma counseling and how prepared we are to offer that just happened. A couple weeks ago, we had a really unfortunate death of one of our teachers at the middle school, and the very next day, we had 145 counselors and social workers in our building preparing to counsel students and staff. They, our administrators worked like overnight, calling everybody they knew in the state to bring in their social workers and counselors to help our kids get through that kind of process. So I can tell you from that specific example, I was proud as heck of them, and I think that they will lead us through any future trauma that we might experience. The other question, I'm sorry, the second question, I'm forgetting.
Uh, yes.
Oh, well, we just did one in the middle. If you just came through the front door of the elementary school, that was on our budget this year, we just made that, that used to, people could walk right through that, and now you have to check in and go through the office, and you have to get buzzed in the building. So that's always in our mind, when we renovated the middle school, we made sure that you could not get through that front door. We had cameras all over the place, so that's top of mind, is something we consider all the time.
Thank you. Andy, did you want to comment on this?
Sure. You know, my experience in this would relate to the program we created, the LEAD Health Textative. I developed that and created that in-house, and that is, while it was found here in Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, really in response to suicides, it's developed into a safety program where we've had an increase in school shooting texts, related, up 600% since Parkland all over the country. That line now serves 10 million people across the country. That's already implemented here in Lake Forest, Lake Bluff. We have Lake Forest, Lake Bluff students using it, including Lake Bluff middle school students using it. So certainly, I'm a huge proponent of getting real-time information out of the hands of people that can actually intervene and provide some community response to that. I think we have great counselors at our school. I think, you know, I work closely with the counselors in the middle school primarily, not so much the elementary school, but I think they're very talented people, but I think we can only use more resources. I do think they're under-resourced, and I think that's a big addition we can make over the course of time.
Okay, thank you. Ann Hill, would you like to comment on safety and counseling?
The only thing I have to add, I agree with everything that Mark and Andy said, is that I know that parents and citizens of, you know, our district were concerned about the safety in the schools. So the upgrade here at the elementary school is wonderful, and that also, administration in both schools has really, really taken seriously the policy of, you check in in the office, you give your driver's license, you wear a sticker when you're in, you check out. And, you know, in the last year, I've definitely seen a huge increase in them really, really following that policy, making sure they know who's in the building, when they're in the building, when they leave. And I think that's a great upgrade, if you will.
Okay, thank you. We have time for one final question. So our first responder, let's see, Mark just went, so I believe we're going to start with Andy. And this question says, "What ideas do you have for keeping up communication and involvement of the non-users, the families without children in the schools? Do you see a role for the larger community in the success of our schools?"
Absolutely. So that 80% group is a hugely important group. I just participated in the strategic planning session that took place last winter and spring, and this is a big piece of that, actually, how do we engage the non-users? There are many non-users, and that 80% who attended and participated in those sessions as well, and I know I learned a lot from that. I think you cannot over-communicate as it relates to people within the district and outside of the district. In terms of ideas, there's lots of technology, there's lots of, I think our principals do a great job. I think the teachers we've had in schools do a great job of communicating, you know, teacher to student. But I do think it's important that we share more of the good things that the school is doing, so those people who are non-users, who no longer have children or grandchildren in the district, really understand what their tax dollars are paying for, and really understand why it's unique in Lake Bluff, why we need them as well.
Great. Ann Hill, can you tell us about the non-users?
I don't really have anything to add to what Andy said. I agree with what you said, and I think it's important to really consider everybody in the community, not just the users.
And Mark, grab a microphone, find a torch, please. Thank you.
I also agree with everything these guys have said. I would say that a few years ago, we started a quarterly that we do with the village and the park district called On the Bluff, that we've gotten a lot of positive feedback from mostly non-users, that we will absolutely continue that, and perhaps we could increase the frequency of that if that is something that makes sense to people. We have found that many of the non-users, and particularly the older non-users, were not as dialed in electronically as some of the others, so we do have to keep mail in our budget to reach people, to keep them up to date. But we would also be open to suggestions on how best to communicate with them on a regular basis. And I do believe that there is a huge role for non-users in our school district. Just look at our board. I'm a non-user, we've got two or three other people on our board who are non-users, and non-users make up 70-plus percent of our taxpayers. You have to have a say, and I expect you to step up and volunteer and be part of those strategic planning committees and superintendent hiring committees. When those opportunities are out there, your voice needs to be heard, so I totally agree with that.
All right, well then, I, thank you. Great candidates. This is not a contested group, so at the moment, we have three candidates who would like to be on the ballot, and we will vote on your ballot, even though they are contested. We would like to collect your ballot, so please keep that in mind, and thank you very much. We're going to switch to a different speaker. And next, we'll do a high school segment, but we have Jill Rosa coming up to the microphone, too. Our boards are groups of people that have staggered terms, so that's why we elect three or four people each time those staggered terms come up every two years. But the nominating system for the high school is a little bit different. We share that group with the Lake Forest Caucus in trying to find candidates, so the procedures are very different, so we'd like to explain that, too. And then we'd also like to ask our high school board members, Dave Lane and Sally Davis, to address you. But to explain it, first, we're going to hear from Jill Rosa, who is our candidate search team, plus support, but, you know, it's Jill.
I just wanted to explain why we're not leading someone for the high school board this term. So we have an informal arrangement with the Lake Forest Caucus, so that there's seven seats on the board, and we nominate for two of the seats on that board, and they nominate for five of the seats on that board, so we don't inadvertently cause a contested election between Vote Lake Bluff and the Lake Forest Caucus. But it doesn't always work out that way, so right now, we actually have three Lake Bluff residents on that board because there was a vacancy, and Sally Davis was nominated and then re-elected for that position. So for this election, Lake Forest is nominating for three, and we're not putting up anybody. And then two years from now, we will choose two people for that board. So that's the way that process works. So the allocation doesn't always turn out correctly, but that's our agreement with the Lake Forest Caucus. So we have Dave Lane and Sally Davis here today, who are sitting on that board, and we thought since part of Vote Lake Bluff is to educate the community and keep you all aware of current issues and what it's like to serve on these boards, that maybe they could spend a few minutes talking about what it's like to serve on the District 115 board and any current issues before them.
Yeah, we can take turns with the microphone, because these folks are actually giving presentations. We have only one question that came in for you. I guess people were not anticipating questions, since you're not exactly on the ballot, so I'm just going to get out of your way, and you can take over the lectern.
Hi, my name is Sally Davis. As Carol said, I'm one of the current Lake Bluff residents, who is a member on the District 115 board. We are the Lake Forest High School Board, and we also were rated exemplary by the state of Illinois. We wanted to talk to you just a little bit about what's going on with the high school, and it sort of fits very neatly into the question, how do you reach out to members of the community who don't currently have students in the high school? This is one of the ways that we do it. One of the things that the board is charged with doing is community engagement. It's something we spend a lot of time talking about and a lot of time attempting to do. What I've learned is, when things are going well, nobody really wants to talk to you all that much. But the best way to handle it is to get to people where they are. So if we hold an open house at the high school, we have learned from experience, you probably won't show up. But if we come to where you are, and we talk about things that are interesting to you, we have a much better opportunity to reach you. we have a much better opportunity to reach you. I'm just gonna give you a little bit of background and a couple of pieces of good news, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Dave, since this is not our show. I have been on the board since 2015, I have lived in Lake Bluff since 2002, I have a son who just graduated from the high school, and I'm an attorney, and I work in-house at SC Johnson up in Racine, Wisconsin. I've had the pleasure and opportunity of serving both on the education committee, which is chaired currently by Lisa Elliott, and on the finance and ops committee, which is chaired by Dave Lane, so Lake Bluff is well represented. When you are considering whether or not to run, or who to vote for, for school board, I've thought a lot about who I think you want. What I have found is that the best success and the best folks, folks to work with on a school board are the people who come to you with an open mind. I worry about folks who have an agenda, they're gonna get there, and they know what they're gonna get done, because the reality is, you don't get the school board you think you want, you get the school board as it is. And the best school board members have open minds, they roll up their sleeves, they pitch in. I don't think it's a surprise that many people who run for school board have held a number of other either elected or volunteer roles. And if you come to it with an open mind, and you ask what the organization needs from you, I think you can do tremendous things for your community, and I think that you'll get the most out of the experience. We passed around fact sheets, I'm sorry, I didn't think there would be this much of a turnout. You can also find this on the Lake Forest High School website. The front of it has our quick glance and facts and figures, it's a favorite among the realtors in the community, when they are explaining to people why they should bring their kids and move to Lake Bluff, as opposed to Highland Park, or someplace in the Stevenson School District. On the back is our mission, our vision statement, and the milestones that we track to be sure that we are delivering the mission and the vision to all of the students in our community. There are two statistics I want to point out to you, because until I was a school board member, they felt warm and fuzzy, but I didn't understand why they mattered so much. One of them on the left-hand side talks about our dramatic increase in the number of students taking AP classes, as well as students who have been designated AP scholars. And an AP scholar is sort of a super-user of APs, they've taken multiple classes, they've taken the test, and they've passed with, um, high scores. Why does AP matter? It looks good, college is like it, but one of the things I didn't understand until I was on the school board is that we track data about how students do, not only while they're in the high school, but when they leave the high school. Do they enter college? Do they finish college? Do they graduate from college? And as painful as this is, a six-year term to get through college is a success. So, for those of you thinking about the cost, keep that in mind. But, AP participation influences college success. That's why we care about that number. Hooray, we have a dramatic increase in first-time students taking AP courses, students taking multiple AP courses, and even with that dramatic increase in the number of kids who are doing it year over year, we are still at a ninety percent success rate in terms of them passing or exceeding the passing grade on the score. But I don't really care about that. What I care about is because we've given those kids the opportunity to stretch themselves intellectually, we are ensuring that when they leave the school district, they will have better outcomes. The second statistic that I wanted to point out to you, uh... Oh, I'm sorry, it's on the, it's on the right side. And that's our Open Doors Career Exploration Program. You'll see on the, the right-hand side that actually that number has increased. So, this past November, over Veterans Day long weekend, when we had two days where the kids were not in school, they had the opportunity to do career shadowing. And this is a current focus of District 115, and it is helping kids from ninth grade on start thinking about what they want to do in the future. And so, we have had this incredible outpouring of support from the community of folks who are willing to take our students, and in a very mini, uh, mini kind of shadowing, job shadowing way, show them potential careers that they might engage in. I will tell you that we then followed that with a career fair in the spring, where folks come onto campus and start talking to the students about the areas that they work in, and many of those have led to a growing summer internship program. So, one of the other things that we think about is, when we send your kids out of the high school into college in the real world, are they leaving with a sense of what they want to go and do? And it's one of the ways in which, first of all, non-users, as Mark Barry called them, in our community can participate directly in the growth and the education of our students, and it's another way in which we are ensuring that our kids leave Lake Bluff and the, the high school set up for success. I've talked to one. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dave.
Thank you. All right, uh, thanks, Sally. So, uh, my name's Dave Lane, I'm the vice president of the 115 Board, and I'm the chairman of the Finance and Ops Committee. I filled a halfway term, I think, uh, two election cycles ago, and just got re-elected two years ago. Really happy to be here, and what I thought I would stress is just the importance of what you guys are doing today. I love, and everybody on the board loves, the caucus system. I think it's fantastic. You guys are engaged, you're spending your time, you're making sure we're out there vetting our ideas, and we're making sure we're vetting the right people. That's awesome. I love what's going on at the District 65 Board, I like how well the students from the District 65, uh, district come into the high school. I think what 65 stresses that becomes apparent at the high school is overall wellness of the child. So, I think it was important that Sally stressed the performance on AP, and I also liked that she was stressing the open doors policy. The fact is, the data after data after data, research after research, comes in and says a fully engaged student, and whatever it is that they're passionate about is a happier, healthier, more successful student. So, I will tell you, at the 115 Board and in the 115 Lake Forest High School, we work very, 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 very hard to make sure that our students are engaged within areas that they're passionate about, and I'm really happy when I see what the District 65 group is doing, because those students, having been a personal participant with my two boys having gone through the system, they seem to do very well, and I think it's fantastic how we balance the desire for academic rigor with the desire for a really happy, well-balanced child, and also really happy and balanced coworkers and whatnot. I did want to stress as far as something that is around the corner, that fiscal responsibility in the state of Illinois has not always been, uh, the, the, the common combination. The fact is, whether we want to be forced to handle it or not, we are going to handle it. There's a move afoot that I actually think has some merit to it, that will be shifting some of the, some of the spending that might have rolled into the state in previous years here locally, that's gonna force us to have to make harder decisions in the future. I will tell you that all of the people on public boards and whatnot are gonna have to roll up their sleeves and think about how they're gonna make ends meet, because there won't be a whole lot of support coming up from the state. Fortunately, because we're in a more affluent district, we haven't required a lot of support from the state, but it might start going the other way. So, I will tell you that it's very, very important that we continue to make the prudent decisions we need to make in, in choosing what we will do, and that's why I'm happy to tell you that we've doubled the percentage of our reserve that we had five years ago. Five years ago, we had about nine or eight, even as low as a seven percent, uh, reserve. We now have an eighteen percent reserve and over ten million dollars. We'll see what happens, but that kind of stability is what we have to prepare ourselves for, because we're not really certain what the state legislature will do. But we have good people we work with, trying to make good decisions, and always with the balanced child at the center of the decision. So, I wanted to thank all you guys for being here, and I also have very vested interests in being here tonight. I know somebody who's running for another district, and she'll do great. But with that, I did, we did have the good fortune of Lisa Elliott here, and I wanted to have her come up as our chair of our education committee briefly.
Thanks, yeah, I'll speak briefly, and, um, I didn't plan to speak, but, um, so I, I'm, uh, speaking a little bit bittersweet, I, I'm stepping down from the board this year after my term is up in April, and I had every intention of running for a second term. I think the caucus would have allowed it, um, in spite of the fact that Lake Bluff's a little bit overrepresented, but just because of professional reasons, and, uh, and now my elderly parents are needing me, um, I just, you know, time-wise, um, didn't feel I could afford to do it. That said, I've been really, it's been very gratifying to see the changes at the high school in the last four years, it's been tremendous. Dave and I were both new members when Shayla Holland's contract was up for a vote, and some of you may remember what a contentious time that was. Well, she has just turned out to be just the magic bullet that Lake Forest High School needed, and it's been fantastic to see the curricular and social-emotional and professionalism developments there at the high school. I think we're on a fabulous trajectory, which doesn't mean we don't have a lot of challenges, mostly fiscal. The school needs, we have this beautiful facade, but as I think you'll be hearing about in the coming year or two, year or so, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done inside the classrooms to bring them up to date and competitive with our surrounding communities. So, get ready for that, I hope the community will be supportive of that, and, um, time's short, so I'll just thank you all for, for the support that you've shown me and the board. It, it's a, it's a very functional, great board right now, and I have every confidence it will stay that way. Thanks.
Lisa, thank you for your service. We have just one question. Maybe you don't want to answer this one, I'll read it to you. Yep, you might want to rewrite it a little bit. It says, "The last high school election was very divisive. Are the community's interests being adequately represented, and is this a continuing struggle?"
I actually love that question. That election I did not love. That was a very challenging election that had two very disparate viewpoints, I think, with each of the two different slates. But the viewpoints, although they were different, as I went through the election and served on the, the board now, some of the concerns and the interests were the same. I mean, the reality is that everybody wants a great environment for our kids, and if you look at the data, and you look at the really remarkable curriculum we're able to offer in a relatively small school, we have an awesome educational product that's, that's known throughout the entire nation. I'm the chairman of the board at Florida State University, and they know about Lake Forest High School and the students that come from Lake Forest High School. And so, I think that the education side's always been really solid. I think a lot of the annex stemmed around spending and the fiscal concerns we have as a community, given the state of Illinois that we live in. Rest assured, uh, you know, the, the board that we have today is a very fiscally responsible board. In fact, we probably lean more into the fiscal responsibility than anything else, in part because we did land on such an amazing principal and educator in Dr. Holland, we couldn't be more pleased with that. So, we are purposefully spending more time in the financial conversations, that's why we're happy that we have a triple-A Moody rating, we have a triple-A bond rating, we're one of seventy-three school districts in the nation that have a triple-A bond rating. That's why we're happy that our reserves have more than doubled in five years, that's a remarkable achievement. You know, that's why, that's why we're taking the steps we're taking right now, to prepare for any eventuality. But I think what wasn't known during the election, that is, that is very clear now, even on that slate, although we were campaigning to protect what we felt was a very sound educational setup, and we were vigorous in the defense of that educational platform, more fiscally responsible and fiduciary aware members were elected, and I think was really allowed to be known, uh, in that election, because the content of the education, I think, was such a hot button for so many.
All right, then, Lisa, Sally, did you want to make some final remarks?
I, I would only echo that, what Dave said, that if, if we aren't disagreeing in a productive way, we're probably not doing our job as a community. So, although it was time-consuming and at times painful, it was a very valuable exercise to hear different points of view, and certainly to be able to incorporate what we heard and what we learned from that process. I came away with a deeper understanding of our mission, but also that all of the data and statistics around what we were attempting to do. We have open board meetings, we have open sessions before board meetings, and I always look forward to when we say, "Is there anybody in the community who would like to comment", when somebody comes up and talks to us. We should be doing that, and, and I thought it was very invigorating, and it was good for all of us.
Thank you, all three of you. Thank you very much. And before we do our final seating with the park commissioners, Dave Anderson from our team has a few words for you.
Okay, uh, Dave Lane was talking about the big bucks, now I'm gonna talk about the little bucks. To put this on every two years cost us roughly sixteen hundred dollars, and it's all a volunteer organization. And we try to, to really be, present candidates in a very nonpartisan way, and it's really kind of a foundation of, of democracy here in Lake Bluff. So, we're gonna pass the hat now, and, uh, we'd like any contributions you can. If you were here last night and gave, there is, there is no rule against giving again tonight, so go ahead and feel free. If you want to make out a check, it would be to the Lake Bluff, or Vote Lake Bluff. And, uh, so that's the first item. The second item is, we would like you to fill out your ballots and turn them in. Now, we have a bonus tonight, because, uh, it's all non-contested, as soon as you turn in your ballot, you then can sign the petitions. And, uh, we would like everybody to please take a little time to sign the petition, because it's important for the candidates. And we would like to remind you that these are legal documents, so please write legibly, and no abbreviations, please, uh, because they'd be rejected otherwise. And Lisa Nash is here to oversee that, so make sure handwriting is good. So, uh, also, we have two stations, one on either side, start from this side of the room, and work your way back towards the door. There are six stations on each of the lanes. Sign one petition in each station, just to make sure there's no duplicate signatures, because they'll be rejected otherwise. So, it, it should go really quickly, so please stay around and do that, and you can just work your way through the, through the lines, and, and the, the different petitions are marked off with green tape, so it'll be easy to tell when you move from one station to another. And it should go quickly. Thank you much.
Thank you, Dave. So, the park commissioner candidates could come up and take, take their seats, we'll go on to our last candidate seating. Oh, one more thing.
One, one, one more thing. And last night, it was kind of a, a mess with petition signing, and we need to thank Molly Mahanca and Bailey Steiner for streamlining the, the, the process, so we can all get out of here quickly, and enjoy the evening.
All right, well, I see Paul's talking to the candidates about timing, um, I'd like to take a moment to tell you about Vote Lake Bluff. Our mission is to find candidates for positions of trust and responsibility. So, you heard Dave Lane say that he likes the caucus system. Sad truth is that there are a lot of communities that have their school elections, and they can't fill all the seats, there's no one on the ballot. That does not happen here, because of our local community practice, we have a strong volunteer tradition, and these folks are doing community service, they are volunteers, and you're part of that, too, but we seek those candidates. Not everybody, you know, is self-nominating, not everybody is, is loud about themselves and their attributes, and not everybody is glib, but there are some very, very fine people there that we just need to ask to serve, and they do. We have a wonderful community in that sense, so we're trying to support the community in that way. And so, that's why our mission is to find the people. We do not have a platform. These folks will be telling you what they think, we're not telling you what anybody should think or vote for. So, we will start now with our seating with the park district commissioners, and again, this one is not contested, there are three candidates for three seats at the moment, at least for us tonight, um, on the April second consolidated election, uh, these three, and perhaps more will be on your ballot, but we're bringing you these three. We're going to start with the two-minute candidate statements, and, and magically do it in alphabetical order, so imaginative. So, that means Jennifer Beeler will be first with a two-minute statement for you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Beeler. About eighteen years ago, my daughters and I moved back to the Lake Bluff community. We bought a house that was directly across from Monmouth Park. And if you're familiar with Monmouth Park, you know that it has a great playground, it has this wonderful field for soccer, for running, but most important, it has the Quade Baseball Diamond, which means that during the summer, it has a water fountain, and it has a porta potty. So, my children literally would not come home for, it seemed like days, because they have the three things you need in Monmouth Park. You have a jungle gym, you have this ever-revolving group of friends, and a private bathroom. We've used every aspect of the park district facilities and the parks, we have gone swimming in the very frigid Blair Park pool during the summer, we have gone to the beach and held family reunions, we've done tennis, we've done the preschool. I feel very fortunate in that, for the last number of years, I've served on the Friends of the Lake Bluff Parks Board. As you know, that's the 501(c)(3) nonprofit foundation that helps raise money to supplement when our tax dollars don't go as far, to provide money for park district community, or for park district programs. I am constantly amazed and constantly edified by what this community is able to do. It's people like the folks from the Golf Foundation, from the paddle, from the Nordic Ski Group, that are able to get together, work with the friends, and raise those additional dollars for programs that they feel are very important for part of the park district. The two reasons why I'd like to be a commissioner is because as part of the Friends bylaws, they seek to have the commissioner serve as a liaison with the Friends Board. I feel that with my experience with the Friends Board, I would be well-suited for that, because we keep the messaging together, and especially with the financial aspect of it, to make sure that we're on the same kind of task to raise funds for supplementing programs when our tax dollars don't go that far. The second reason, though, is for stewardship. For all the programs that my children use, that I continue to use, that I'm hoping that you and your families use, I want to see these continue on in the future, and we need to have the responsibility, the vision, and the fiscal responsibility to be able to have these as part of the park district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jen. For our next one, Paul Greenfield.
Good evening. For the past ten months, I've had the pleasure of being actively involved in the Lake Bluff Community Golf Association, and the community's successful effort to keep the Lake Bluff Golf Course open, along with Emily. During this time, I think all of us who were involved became much more familiar with the operations of operations of the park district and the board, both strengths as well as areas needing improvement. So when talk about the board elections began, I thought that I could make a contribution to what the board is hoping to accomplish by running for a position as commissioner. One of the things I've seen since moving to Lake Bluff over five years ago, and especially during these 10 months, is that the community as a whole has such an enthusiasm for all the activities in Lake Bluff, including those of the park district. In order to help maintain and improve the park district programs and facilities, there would be two prime areas I would start focusing on. First, I believe the financial reporting of the park district needs to become much clearer, both for the community to understand how its taxpayer dollars are being used and as a proper management tool for the commissioners. Second, I believe the board needs to be as proactive as possible in facing issues that everyone knows we have. This is going to be critical concerning the future of the beach. Since we not only have financial constraints, we are facing Mother Nature at the same time. We are really going to have to be forward-thinking, realistic, and honest in order to optimize that fabulous resource. And we are going to have to have a solid understanding of the financial aspect of any undertaking. The first company I worked for many years ago used to throw around the saying, "There are no problems, just opportunities." That may be a little cheesy, but I think it's the attitude we need and that I will take if I'm elected a commissioner. Thank you all for coming here this evening, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Emily Lane, would you like to speak? Yeah, just grab a microphone and point it towards you. Yeah, keep it close.
Hi, everyone. Thank you all for taking the time to come out tonight and thank you, the Lake Bluff Caucus, for setting us up tonight. My name's Emily Lane, my family and I moved to Lake Bluff in 2005. At the time, our sons were three years old and I was pregnant with my daughter. Our children went to the preschool at the Lake Bluff Park District where we made our first connections with the Lake Bluff community. Now our children are 16, 16, and 12 and attend the Lake Bluff Public Schools. Prior to moving here, we lived in California and Florida. My education background consists of two undergraduate degrees, a nursing degree from the University of South Florida and a rehabilitative service degree from the University of Florida. Prior to becoming a mom, I worked as a NICU nurse, and after becoming a mom, I have been able to volunteer in various community positions, such as a Girl Scout troop leader for six years, in Boy Scouts as a, the Lake Bluff District 65 PTO enhancement chair for five years, with the Lake Forest High School Wellness Day, as a Sunday school teacher at the Lake Bluff Union Church, as a Lake Forest High School cross-country team parent, on the Lake Bluff Park District Health Fitness Strategy Committee, and as a member of the Lake Bluff Golf Community Association, Paul said. When I was the curriculum enhancement chair for the Lake Bluff PTO, was able to work with the administration to organize a school-wide community mosaic art project that you might have noticed when you walked in. My family and I have had many, many wonderful experiences because of the Lake Bluff Park District, from volleyballing and paddle boarding on Sunrise Beach, to golfing with friends and family, to enjoying concerts on the green. We have connected and grown because of the Lake Bluff Park District, and I want to help it to continue to serve others as it has helped me and my family. And I will do my best to help it thrive. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. And so now we'll begin with some of the questions. They have questions on both the golf course and the beach, I'm sure you're not surprised. And we'll lead off with this one. So our first responder will be Paul Greenfield and the question is, "Our precious beach and its continued preservation has been identified as the number one asset in two recent surveys. Given the importance of this resource, what is the best mix of taxpayer dollars and private funding to ensure the beach remains a valued asset for generations to come?"
Well, I, I think, first of all, I think, as we did with the golf course, I think it's really vital that the community as a whole gets involved with whatever is going to be done about the beach. There are some different opinions in terms of what should be done, what can be done, and how much money it's going to cost. Many of the solutions are, are quite expensive. And as I said, when you have Mother Nature, you have some different elements involved, it's not always clear that there is a solution to the problem. So for me, the important thing is first and foremost to get the community as a whole involved in that decision-making process. I think the board has a responsibility to take final decisions, but this is too big a decision to leave to just those seven people.
Okay, thank you, Emily Lane. Grab a microphone. Same question, please.
Can you just repeat it?
Yes, I certainly can. Thank you. And it's a long one. "Our precious beach, its continued preservation, number one asset in surveys. So what is the best mix of taxpayer dollars and private funding to ensure it remains an asset for generations to come?"
Well, I did, I definitely agree with Paul. He did a good job there. And I know, I was just at the special board meeting on the third, on Monday, and I know they had talked about, they had some grants that they are talking about using for the Sunrise Beach, and then also fundraising as a possibility, and then allocating, and then they did downsizing. So I think a combination of the budgeting and then using all the different fundraising, the grants, and I think, like Paul said, using everybody, not just the seven commissioners, but the community and reaching out to the different options that are available, such as the grants and then the community fundraising, like we did at the Lake Bluff Golf, and working together as a team.
Great. Jennifer Beeler, same question?
In 2015, we had a renovation of the beach effort and it was amazing to see what happened at that time. We had state funding that came in, that came through the commissioners. There was also talk about raising taxes, which of course, no one likes to hear about, but they also leaned on the friends at that time to raise money to be able to supplement. And so I think it's going to be an interesting combination of all three. We're going to have to see what those renovations are going to be to prevent the beach erosion. That's really going to be critical because if anyone's been down to the beach recently, we've got this much sand left. It's importing sand from the other communities as well. But it's going to be a combination of what we're going to be able to get for state funding, from any sort of grants, and really looking to the people who use the beach as, are the asset of our community, to say what's important and what can be done from private funding as well, to help make that whole effort combined and preserve that asset.
Okay, Emily Lane, you'll be the first responder for the next question. And it's an area of concern, the beach and these two questions, so I'm going to read both of them and hope, hope we can cover them. "What is to be done with the groups who rent the beach pavilion and leave it in bad shape, have more people present than contracted, disrupt the neighborhood, and leave big cleaning problems for the park district?" So that's very clear. And the other question asks, "What is your position for parking near the lake for non-residents who use the beach?" In parentheses, "the churches, the sailing clubs." And this questioner states, "The village is currently considering parking for Lake Bluff stickers only." So what do we think about the condition of groups that use the beach, the condition they leave the beach and the beach pavilions? And what about the parking issue?
Well, with the, I would think with the pavilion, they would request a deposit, so that would cover some of the damages that would occur. And then with the parking, as two boys who work at the, I have two sons who work at the, the Lake Bluff Yacht Club, I know that there's a lot of outside users that come for the sailing and I think they should be allowed to park there because they're using that and they're part of the community. That's what makes Lake Bluff amazing, you get to learn how to sail here. That's one of the things I did, that's one of the things my kids did, and I think it's nice to have people from outside come and sail with us and use the facilities too, just as long as they're being respectful, and I've never seen a problem with them causing an issue. I think it's, it's always important to be open and inclusive.
Okay, Jennifer Beeler, did you have a comment about?
I agree with Emily from the sense of when someone does rent the pavilion down at the beach, they do put a deposit down and ultimately, they should be fiscally responsible if they don't leave it in the same condition that they did. We want to be able to use these pavilions and use the beach as much as we can. From my friends who are realtors, I think they say the same thing to somebody who buys a house in Lake Bluff along the parade route, or along the bicycle route, or God forbid, along the candy route for Halloween, you know the kind of traffic you're going to get. People who are close to the beach, I think, anticipate that as well because they know that they are going to be the receptacle of a lot of people who are down there. It's all about community respect, and if people are using this for the yacht club, for events that are down there, they're using the parking stickers that are available for them and hopefully, they leave in the same kind of condition that they started so that they know that they can continue to use that and do that respectfully.
Okay, Paul Greenfield, pavilions and parking?
I would agree with, with what Emily and Jennifer have said, especially the part about the people living down by the lake, they know what, what they bought into, it's a beautiful area, but it is going, it is beautiful and they are going to attract a lot of people coming to that area from outside the community, as well as from other parts of Lake Bluff, and it's going to get crowded during the summer. We all have to act responsibly, we all have to treat our resources properly, and if that requires financial deposits and, and payments and so on to make up for any damage that's done at the pavilion or any cleanup that needs to be done, then that certainly is part of it. But I think a combination of, of everybody using the resources responsibly and everybody sharing that beautiful lakefront should, should get the script on, I think.
Okay, last beach question. We have one more, so Jennifer, you'll be the first one to respond. And this is about the beach itself. One writer, well, actually has a statement here, "In the early 1980s, there were severe erosion issues at the Lake Bluff beach, endangering the beach. The park board worked with the village to obtain federal dollars from the Corps of Engineers, and we should do a similar strategy now." So a statement, but you can comment on that. And the question that we also have is, "With climate change exacerbating beachhead erosion, would you ever support a referendum that calls for a special beach preservation tax?"
Oh goodness. I, I, I'd be afraid to say yes to that because I just don't know what kind of tax that would entail or what the fiscal impact of something like that would be. We've had special task force for the beach for many different reasons. I'm going to go back again to 2015 when we did the renovation of the bathrooms for ADA compliance and rebuilt the stairs going down to the beach. It was really important to the people in our community that our beach not look like Lake Forest, that we felt as we always do as a community, we know what our Lake Bluff hood is about and we know what our Lake Bluff beach is about. If it comes up to the point where the erosion is so severe that it's going to impact our ability to have that Lake Bluff beach again the way it is, it's something that as a community, I think the village would be as interested as the park district.
Okay then, Paul Greenfield, beach erosion?
Well, I, I think the, the important thing with the beach and with the erosion there and what needs to be done, I think it's a question of, of the park board getting a good and professional understanding of what the problems are, what the potential solutions are. And then as, as I think we've all said, I think it's a question of taking it to the community and having the community decide whether they're going to go along with spending a lot of money for something that may not be able to be solved, no matter what we do, or finding other short-term solutions. We may have to be a little more creative in this and think a little bit outside the box in order to find the right way to go forward. But I, I think, I think that's the way we have to proceed in terms of my supporting a referendum. I would support going to the public. I really wouldn't feel comfortable doing anything in a major way without the community as a whole having a full understanding of what's going on, like we did with the golf course, where we got the whole community involved in what was happening with the golf course and a, a good solution was found.
Okay, thank you. Emily, did you, you have any more comments about beach erosion?
No, I agree with Paul. I think involving the community and letting them know, I think when they know there's a problem, I think that's the best part of Lake Bluff, they want to help. Everybody always wants to help, and if you tell them that we need help, then people will help, and that's why we're here.
Great. A positive take. So now we're going to switch to the golf course, and Paul, you'll be the first one to respond, so let me read the question. "The golf course has been rented out. The debt service for the golf course has been assumed wholly by the park district. How will this affect other activities?"
I, I certainly, I can't go back to the time when the debt service was taken on, so I really can't address why it was taken on, what the understanding was when the park district took it on. I think there are a number of reasons why the park district ended up having to do what it did with the golf course. And I think we got to the point where the debt service was there and it was going to be there, no matter, no matter what happened with the golf course, whether it was open or closed, the debt service was there. So then the issue was, all right, now what to do with the golf course and how do we maximize that resource? And so a solution was found for that, and we all hope it's, it's a good long-term solution. And, and I think, you know, one of the things that I certainly would want to look at, when and if I'm on the, the park district board, is, okay, now we do have this debt service, we have other expenses, we have other things that, that we need to spend money on, how do we do that in a, in a responsible manner?
Okay, thank you. Emily Lane, did you want to comment on the debt service and if it's affecting other activities at the park district?
I think the debt service is not, I mean, it's, that is the problem with the, the Lake Bluff Park District is the budget, it hasn't been on budget for over 10 years. And I think they're going in the right direction. The board made a good decision with the golf course leasing it out, and that really affected the budget by cutting out several employees, allowing now the budget, which I heard on Monday, was going to be impositive. So I think they're taking the right steps and I'm excited about it, and that's why I'm excited to be on the board, because that one step, just reorganizing it and leasing out, was the right thing for the board to do, so I'm really proud of them for doing that. And I think they're hitting the right direction where we are going to actually, I think, be able to balance the park district.
Okay, thank you. And Jennifer, did you want to follow up on that question?
When the commissioners voted to take the golf visions package and to let them run the golf course, the park district made a very difficult decision. They had to let a number of staff people go, which, these are people who have obviously been part of the park district for some time. It was a difficult decision, but fiscally, it was the right move to do. Fortunately, the money that the golf association raised, which was about $126,000, which was incredible over that very short period of time, that money is not being used to retire debt, it's being used toward making the golf club ADA compliant. That's going to be half that package, there's also going to be money coming in from the ADA. So I think that with the debt service, we're moving in very positive directions as to how to correct that, and we're also looking toward other things within the park district with renovations of the buildings, of other things that need to be done in order to be able to keep the park district current. So I think that there were very positive things that came out of that.
Okay, well, we have just two more questions, but Jennifer anticipated the next question. And well, it's Emily Lane's turn to be first, but the question is, "What is the best way for the park board to address the current Lake Bluff Golf Course clubhouse, which will become ADA non-compliant as early as 2019?"
Do you want Emily to start with that?
Or would you like, would you like to field it to Jennifer?
Yeah, I would.
We're all love friends here.
We're a team, this is a team.
This is. I really would welcome anybody to come into the golf course now to see because the golf association did a great job with doing some painting, some other things, just to kind of spruce up the place, but it is sad, and it really does need renovation. I'm really thrilled with the fact that the park district and the commissioners are moving ahead right now, they've already brought an architect on board, they already have preliminary plans, and they want to move ahead as early as February to see if they can have the building compliant by golf season starting in April. But from all the, that I'm hearing as well, from the golf association group, there are still very motivated people with open wallets who still want to raise more money to upgrade what we're even pers- what we're even probably going to be doing for the renovation of the golf club. Go out there sometime in the evening at sunset, it's just absolutely beautiful to be out there.
Okay, Emily Paul, did you want to add anything to the clubhouse? We've heard it's sad, do you want to comment on that?
Well, I just, as Jennifer mentioned, and, you know, when we talk about community, community involvement, we got involved in saving the golf course, and on our list, there are actually about ninety or a hundred people. A smaller group was more actively involved. But we got together, and in the course of probably eight weeks, we raised about $125,000. And that $125,000 is going to be half of the money that's required to renovate the clubhouse, bring it up to ADA compliance, and renovate the clubhouse. And so I think that is certainly the type of thing that as a community, we can do. It wasn't easy, but, you know, we managed to do it with very little time and with very little professional expertise in it. So there are solutions for these problems that we face, if we all get together to work on it. And I, you know, I'm looking forward to doing that from a position of the board, but we'll stay involved with the golf course as well, because we do want to continue that effort.
Great. And Emily, did you want to make a final comment on the subject, or are we good?
No.
All right, we're good. Okay, this is the final question, and so I will take a moment to remind you that we really do want your ballots. I see that the petition lanes are set up, and the candidates really do need your signatures to file their papers, so that's what we will do when we adjourn. But here's our final question for this group. The writer says, "I was surprised to see the community survey had land acquisition as the number-two priority after the beach. Does the park district have any plans for this, or perhaps, do you have any plans for this?" I should ask, since you're candidates. Land acquisition for the park district, number-two priority after the beach. What do we think of that? Jennifer?
I saw that as well as part of the strategic plan, and, please excuse me, because that's not an area that I'm that well-appointed with, but I know that with some of the land that the park district has had, for example, they sold off some land in order to help with the beach renovation. But I think that's something that the park district has on its spectrum as to what to do in the future.
Okay, great. Paul Greenfield, did you want to comment?
Also, not being on the board, I have no idea what plans they might have been talking about. Without knowing all that much about it, I would think that we have plenty of issues with the beach, with maintaining the other parks, and continuing supervision of the golf course. The land acquisition seems to me to be pretty far down the list in terms of what we should be focusing on.
Okay, final comment from you, Emily? We're wrapping up.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, with ten parks, and two beaches, and the golf course, we have a lot right now on our plate. I think we need to focus on taking care of the things that we have right now, so I would think that would be on the bottom of the taking care.
Okay, and I want to thank you all for being here. Good government leads you. I couldn't tell if you wanted to come talk or not. All right.